Well, good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, February 13, 2012. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Our first order of business would be the roll call. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Galloway, Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Here.
Tiana?
Here.
Mayor Coulter?
Here. Yes, thank you. We have a quorum this evening. Our next item of business is a number of presentations to come before the council this evening. And our first presentation is the fire protection agreement with the city of Pleasant Ridge. And we are privileged this evening to have a couple of representatives of the city of Pleasant Ridge. Mayor Ralph Castelli and city manager Sherri Ball are here. Why don't you come on up and say hello, introduce yourselves to the folks on TV and in the audience? Mayor, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. It's been about 26 years since I've been on this side of the podium.
Wow.
We're pleased to be here. We're pleased that the discussions that you and I started in June have culminated in a tentative agreement that hopefully will be approved by you folks tonight and us folks tomorrow night and signed later this week. Also with me is Commissioner Kriziek.
Yes, Commissioner, who's been here before. Good to see you. Thanks for coming.
And I've been the master at arms opening your door while people are coming.
Well, thank you very much for coming. Sherri Ball, city manager of the great city of Pleasant Ridge.
Thank you, and thank you for inviting us tonight. I just wanted to offer a special thanks to the city manager, April McGrath, and to you, Mayor Coulter. It was an absolute delight working with you. And, you know, April, I think, faced some challenges because she came in so late in the process, but kudos to her. She is an absolute professional, and I think we have formed a new friendship, I'm proud to say. So, thank you both.
Commissioner. Welcome.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank everyone who worked hard on this, on your side and on our side. I know it's been a long journey, but I appreciate the effort on both sides to get this deal done. One thing I wanted to make sure I came here tonight on behalf of the cities, the citizens of the city of Pleasant Ridge, I want to make sure that the firefighters of the Ferndale Fire Department know that this was, in large part, a approval of the job that they do for our citizens. And we appreciate that, and I just wanted to make sure that we made that clear. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I see yet another Commissioner from the great city of Pleasant Ridge. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Anne Perry, a Commissioner in Pleasant Ridge. And I do also want to thank you and all of the Commission in Pleasant Ridge for all the hard work and how, you know, how long and wonderful this relationship has been. And we look forward to continuing that. And everything we can do to make it smooth and easy, we will look forward to working with all you guys on that. Thank you.
Commissioner, thank you very much. I probably should have done a better job of introducing this item just for the folks in the audience or those at home, but if you, you know, the buzzword these days is service consolidation and communities partnering with each other. Well, there's a 90-year example of that right here in Ferndale. We have been partners with our friends and neighbors in Pleasant Ridge for 90 years for fire services. And some of you probably know, middle of last year, Pleasant Ridge decided that they wanted to look at some other options, see what else was out there, and which is totally within their right to do, and they took some time to do that. But in the meantime, of course, we were hopeful that maybe we could continue that relationship. And so, the mayor alluded, and the city manager alluded to the fact that we had been meeting over the last six months to continue negotiations with a fire contract with the city of Pleasant Ridge. And this evening, I'm very happy to be able to bring forward to our council for consideration a potential agreement with the city of Pleasant Ridge that would continue our long 90-year history of providing fire services in that community. I too want to congratulate our city manager. She was even newer than I was to the process, but we've both sort of jumped in with both feet into this process. I should say, Councilman Galloway, who's not here this evening, is also part of our fire liaison committee with the city of Pleasant Ridge and was very involved in that as well. And so, thanks to all of you, and in particular, thanks to Mayor Castelli and the city manager, who we have met countless times over the last several months, and as negotiations go, there's give and there's take and there's compromise. But I think that we have reached an agreement that is fair to both cities, fair to the citizens of both cities, protects vital services in both of our communities, and restores, like I said, a partnership that has been going on for 90 years. And so, I probably shouldn't say anymore because there isn't a motion on the table, but at this point, I would entertain a motion from one of my colleagues on this agreement. And it is in the packet.
I'd like to move that we approve the fire services contract with the city of Pleasant Ridge.
So, that would be moved by Martin and supported by Tiana. And now is when we're actually supposed to talk about these things, but are there any questions or comments from council on this agreement?
Good job done by all. I know it was going to be a process from the get-go, so, thank you, Pleasant Ridge.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you. I mean, this is, I'm just very pleased we're able to keep this here.
Great, appreciate it. All right, if there's no other comments from the audience, by the way, since this won't be on the regular agenda, this would be the time, if there's anyone from the audience that has any comments on this agreement as well. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Tiana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That agreement passes. Again, for all our friends in Pleasant Ridge, thanks for coming out. Thanks for all your work. Our next item of business is a presentation from the Ferndale Public Schools. Oh, yeah, don't drop that way. Wait, your turn library. Schools come to the library tonight. Good evening, how are you?
Good evening. My name is Jessica Stilger, communications specialist for Ferndale Public Schools. My first item tonight is just a reminder that the Ferndale Board of Education approved placing a bond on the February 28 ballot that would provide funds to keep buildings as up-to-date as possible, providing the best learning environment for our students. Voters in the Ferndale School District will be considering a $22.8 million bond to fund facilities improvement, student safety enhancements, technology equipment, and energy-saving measures. This proposal extends the current bond issue beyond its scheduled expiration in 2023 to 2041. For more information, you can visit the Ferndale Schools bond pages on our website, ferndalschools.org. Online is a comprehensive frequently asked questions section, the official ballot language, and a complete list of proposed bond projects. We'd like to congratulate Ferndale High School's Lexi Brison-Fast. She will be signing her NCAA National Letter of Intent this week to attend Saginaw Valley State University and play soccer for them. We'd like to congratulate Troy Dillary, a Ferndale High School junior, on making the All-State Choir. We'd also like to congratulate Chavez Ferris, a Ferndale High School senior, who is on his way to the Wrestling State Championship this weekend. It will be his third trip, and we are hoping for, he's hoping for a third All-State finish. It's also time to think about kindergarten for fall. We have tours going on right now at Roosevelt and Kennedy, and if anyone is interested in the magnet programs, the deadline to finish paperwork and take tours is February 29. We have all of the enrollment paperwork on our website, ferndalschools.org, as well as tours in our calendar. Any further questions can be directed to the enrollment office at 248-586-8686. It's also time to think about the Ferndale High School musical. This year, they are doing Grease, which should be a big hit with everybody. Opening night is March 17. All ages are welcome, and it should be a really fun show. The theater has a new website, ferndaltheater.org, for anyone to visit to look up showtimes and dates. We want to thank everyone in the community who came to Extravaganza, our district-wide showcase, and our Community Breakfast, which we host in conjunction with the Ferndale Area Chamber of Commerce. We had excellent turnouts for both, and we are hoping the community was able to learn more about the Ferndale Schools. Next week is Midwinter Break, which means no schools for all of our schools, including Casa. I've left each of you a invitation from our school board to join them at a special reception with elected officials from all four of the communities that serve our district on March 20. So, we hope to see all of you there. Please RSVP to Stephanie Hall at shhall@ferndalschools.org. We produce newsletters once a week in the Ferndale Schools. They look like this. And if anyone in the community is interested in signing up for our weekly newsletters, you can email fpsfanout@ferndalschools.org, and also visit us on Facebook. Finally, we'd just like to remind everyone that the bond election day is Tuesday, February 28.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all the information. Now, Mr. O'Donnell, President of the Ferndale Library Board of Trustees.
Well, we're just so excited about the city, library, school.
So many good things.
We're all on the same team. Well, state law, the city ordinance, and the library bylaws all require us to present an annual report to the city. The basic requirements of the report are statistical and financial. The financial piece is included every month in your financial packet, of course, and in the city audit, but we have a few other pieces of information that we want to present today. So, just with highlights, our highlights of 2011, fiscal year 2011, of course, at the beginning of that fiscal year, we opened our brand-new building. At the latter end of that fiscal year, last June, we hired our new library director, Kate Pogela, who's here with us tonight. We established the First Stop Friday Music Series, so generally, on the first Friday of every month, we have two live music acts in the library, in the community room. And we also supported the revitalized Friends of the Ferndale Library, who have over 100 members. They have a bookshop that is staffed much of the time by volunteers. When there are not volunteers in their staffing, people can still purchase used books at the counter. Some of the basic statistics that we have, that we want to report, we have almost 10,000 active library cardholders, so, and almost all of these are residents of the city. So, almost half of the city residents have an active library card. There's 63,000 total items in the collection, which includes books, DVDs. I think there's still a few videotapes that we have, CDs, magazines, newspapers. Last year, we purchased about 3,800 new books, DVDs, and CDs, added those to the collection. We removed about 500 items, which we either lost, but mostly weeded those items that are out of date, especially, there's a lot of children's, you know, science books or adult science books that, you know, get out of date and things like that, or items that don't circulate very much. 63,000 people also visited us during the year. They asked 26,000 reference questions or requests. We offered 276 programs, which were attended by 2,642 people. And over the course of that year, there were 32,000 individual computer sessions that people use the library's computers for. So, that's the rather dry presentation of the statistics, but what the library really is about is the people who visit the library. We have people who are looking for jobs, are looking to change careers, readers of all types, people who just love music or movies. We have all kinds of movies and also TV series that are on DVD. We have a book, Raising Chickens for Dummies, I saw on the U bookshop. So, if you're looking to start your backyard chicken coop, we've got information on that.
Hasn't been taken out much, have you got enough?
A lot of people just come in because they want to use the computer to connect with their social network, play Farmville or whatever, and then just in general, fund seekers, romantics, travelers, and pirates, which we'll see in a little bit. During last year, and this has been pretty much true since we passed our millage, almost all of our revenue comes from the property tax assessment, the two mills, which is adjusted down because of Headley to about 1.96 mills. We received some money in state aid, less than what the legislative minimums used to be. It used to be a dollar per person per year, and it's, well, it was under 50% of that. And then also, in the Constitution, it provides that libraries are also funded through penal fines, so when people break state laws and they're assessed a fine as part of their sentence, that library is allocated on a per capita basis through each county treasurer's office, and some of that comes back to the library, about $27,000 last year. And then, a very tiny amount, which is 0%, in percentage terms, but so far this fiscal year that we're in has grown considerably, our contributions and other small sources of revenue. But either through the friends of the library, who have contributed thousands of dollars through the volunteer time that they do for special events in the bookstore, or donations from our year-end appeal this past year, we have seen a dramatic jump in contributions this year, which is good, because as we'll see on the next slide, of course, the revenue trends, as they are for the city, they've been going down for the library as well. Since most of our money comes from property taxes, we've seen the same substantial decline that the city has, since we're using the same tax base. And of course, with the assessments that people receive, you know, we expect another fairly substantial drop for fiscal year that ends June 30, 2013. On the expense side of things, about half of our expenses are for staff expenses, salaries, wages, and fringe benefits. 9% goes for books, DVDs, CDs, those kinds of materials. 24% goes to pay the bond, the 20-year bond that was taken out to fund the renovations. About 9% is for other building operations, which includes our lease with the city. And 10% is, that 10% for everything else includes last fiscal year, about $50,000 in capital expenses, sort of the tail end of the bond, of the reconstruction project that was not funded out of the bond fund. Since this seems to come up from time to time in the media, I just wanted to provide a little overview of how the library is governed and how it is part of the city, but sort of independent. The governance of the library is defined by state law. So, state law says that a library of our type, a city library, has an independent elected library board. So, we're responsible for the budget, and we're responsible, you know, we were responsible after going through the normal city building processes that everybody else would have to go through, but we're responsible for the renovation of the library, for, you know, keeping things well-maintained within the library. We have to keep all of our funds with the city treasury, so we have a separate fund, but it's part of the city's treasury. The city owns the building, and even though we're not governed by city council, except through, you know, the course of ordinary ordinances and things, we're still the city's library, and we very much view ourselves as having to work very closely with city council and city hall. So, aside from books, the website at the library has a lot to offer. One of the things you can do that we just added last year is a database called Mango, which is a language database, so you can learn a new language. You can borrow and download eBooks and audiobooks through a service called Overdrive that's also paid with tax dollars, so you can, you know, borrow those books at no cost to you. You can pay fines online now through your library network account, as long as you owe more than $5 because of credit card minimums. You can donate to the library right from our webpage. You can read blogs. We have a music blog called The 780s and a blog called The FPL Observer. Our calendar of events is on there, and you can also access dozens of other electronic resources via the Michigan E-Library. So, I just wanted to take a minute to show a little bit about that. This is a screenshot of our homepage. So, over there on the left side of the screen, you see a button for Mel, M-E-L.org. That's the Michigan E-Library. By the way, the donation button is over on the right side, right here. Click to donate, right below the Food for Fines shot. Then, on the next slide, one of the resources that we have, through Mel, once you click through there, you can click on Learning Express. This is really a rich source of information for people who are looking for work, who are out of work, high school students, parents, college students. Once you're here, you can do things like, if you're going to take the police exam, you can take a whole bunch of different practice tests and workbooks that you can go through to prepare for police officer exams, other civil service exams. There's job preparation skills and courses that you can take that are all free, like if you wanted to learn SharePoint, which is a Microsoft tool, you can do that. Business writing, you can do that. If you're preparing for your US citizenship exam, you can do a practice test on that also. So, on the next slide is just an example of an ACT practice test. So, it's timed, just like the real ACT is, and you go through, and I won't make anyone on city council do the story problem at the front there, but you go through, you take the test, and it gives you your results right there, and so you can understand what you got wrong, practice for the ACTs, which I know are coming up next month. So, the last thing online that I wanted to show you is two spots below that Mel link on the left side of the screen is a button for Mango, which is the language program. So, once you get into Mango, you sign in, you just use an email address to create your account, and you have to put in your library card number so they know you're from the Ferndale Public Library. All of those languages that you see there are available, that you can learn, and it's really oriented towards travelers or, you know, people who want to learn the language on a casual basis, but they also have courses for people who are learning English, whose native language is one of the others. But one of the language, I mentioned pirates earlier, just for fun, one of their more popular courses is you can learn how to speak pirate. Yes, R. You have to say lots of extra Rs when you're doing pirate. But I wanted to point out German, which is on the next slide, because my aunt and uncle are going to Germany next month, so if they wanted to brush up on their German, once you get your account, you can download an app for your smartphone or for your computer at home, laptop, or tablet computer. And what the program does, and I'll just play it here, it just walks you through step by step, learning a language, and it's pretty intuitive, so I'll play it on my phone here.
Here's a challenge. Say, beautiful weather today.
So, it gives you a question, and then you answer. And then it, sorry, that's.
Schunestetehoeta.
Schunestetehoeta, yes, we're the German speakers. So, it gives you a chance to practice your pronunciation, and it's all paid for already, so I encourage everybody to take advantage of that. The people who are at our reference desk at the library know about this and can help people get oriented, but it really is pretty intuitive. Once you click on the links, you can create your account, it's very simple. So, just to wrap up, our plans for this calendar year, as we finish out fiscal year 12 and beyond, we want to work on the library's strategic plan, to do a comprehensive planning for 2012 and the future. We want to make sure it's very much aligned with the city's goals in its planning. Next month, we are going to launch the 2012 version of our Ferndale Reads, the book that's been chosen for adults, is called The Local News by Berkeley native Miriam Gershau. And our kickoff party is this Thursday at 7:00 at the library in the community room. So, copies of the book will be available at the kickoff party or afterwards in the library. So, we encourage everybody to stop by, get the book, read it. There's a whole calendar of events on the website that you can connect with book discussions. Go Comedy is doing some things with the book as part of their improv on Thursday nights, and various other things around town. And then, we're also, at your next meeting, we'll probably be bringing something in front of you for a Friends event that's going to be happening in April, but the Friends are continuing to be active, and we'll do special events at the library. They sponsor a lot of programs and collections. So, lastly, I just want to give our thanks to various people, starting with the Ferndale taxpayers and residents. We certainly give our thanks to the Friends of the Ferndale Library. Their website is ferndalfriends.org. You can go there and join the Friends, make a donation, find out what's happening on their calendar of events. We thank the generous donors that gave to our annual appeal at the end of 2011. I want to thank our library director, Kate Pogela, and the wonderful staff that we have at the library, and also Clerk Cheryl Lintolman, and DPW Director Byron Fertides, and Finance Director Jane Marie Hubecks, and Chief Tim Collins, who all have worked closely with the library on various things over the course of this year, and all of their teams. And also, city council, city manager, April McGrath, and all of the city workers who are both library cardholders and valued members of the library city team.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thanks for all the work that you do as well. Very informative. Thank you. I think the next presentation involves you, or maybe you and Kate, but it's the Peace Action Education Fund. I see some folks here from Peace Action. Come on up. Frank, is this your show? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. The Peace Action Education Fund is part of a national organization called Peace Action, which began in the mid-'50s, right after the first nuclear tests out West. Albert Einstein, Eleanor Roosevelt, Norman Cousins, Albert Schweitzer, a group of people like that, recognized that something happened that was one of those things that changes history. And they came together, formed an organization, at that time it was called SAIN, for SAIN Nuclear Policy. And from that, over the last 50 years, has evolved the country's largest grassroots peace organization, with groups like Peace Action of Michigan in almost every state. If you would like to know more about the history, about the organization and all of that, it's very easy, if you just Google Peace Action of Michigan, our webpage comes up, the national webpage comes up, and you can learn as much as you care to about the group. The people who are with Peace Action here tonight, Kelly Farah, who's on Peace Action's board, Jim, who is wearing two hats tonight, he's also on Peace Action's Finance Committee, and Helen Weber, who just, Helen Weber, who just finished her second term as co-chair of National Peace Action, and is now co-chair of Michigan Peace Action. So, I just wanted to say that the, this little grant that we have is the results of a really exciting collaboration between our donors, the members of Peace Action around the state of Michigan, and the Ferndale Community Foundation. And then, a second collaboration, which we are now inaugurating tonight, will be between Peace Action's Education Fund and the library. And I didn't mention in the introduction, but the Education Fund is a 501(c)(3), so it's not political, it's educational, and that's why it seems to be like such a nice fit with the $68,000 that you mentioned in your report. What we're going to do is present a check for $1,500, and the selection of the books, the documentaries, the movies, will of course be made by the library staff, but we do have, and I will give to the librarian, a list of books that deal with conflict resolution, peace, and justice. And Kelly has a couple of the books.
Why War Is Never a Good Idea, by Elsie Walker. Do you want me to read all the titles?
Sure.
Tinderbox, U.S.-Middle East Policy and the Roots of Terrorism. Other Lands Have Dreams. Other Lands Have Dreams, from Baghdad to Pekin Prison. Peace Action, Past, Present, and Future. Count Down to Zero, Demand Zero, and Peace Action at 50, Our Long and Light Road.
Now, in addition to the books and the list of several hundred suggestions that we're making to the library, and the list of a couple of hundred different movies and documentaries, I also, just by a stroke of luck, found a list on the internet that tells us all of the websites in the country, and there are lots of peace groups in universities and in neighborhoods around the country. So if somebody was doing research and wanted to just know more about the peace movement in the country, what people are doing, the list that I'm including in the packet here will give them enough resources to last a lifetime. So without any further ado, I would like to present to Jim and Kate.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Frank, that's a very generous gift to the library, I know they appreciate it, and we all appreciate the work that Peace Action, you and Helen and Kelly and everyone has done, so thanks for all your work as well. Thank you very much. Our next presentation this evening would be the Ferndale Fire Department, and they have something to hand out tonight as well, right Chief? Chief Sullivan from the Fire Department.
We have several. Nobody's excited about this either. We have several board-up companies that we use when there's been a fire or damage to a building in the city, and one of these board-up companies is called ISC, and as their give back to the community, they have a We Care program. And so they ask us, after whatever work they do in the city, they compile a percentage and they give it back to the community. So they came up with 187.75, asked the Fire Department what we could do with it, and we thought nothing better than giving it to Fernd Care as an excellent program from within the city. So, from the ISC, and the check is stuck inside the envelope, I'm awarding this certificate and this check to Ann Heller.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
(applause) Ann, I bet you have a couple of words you would say.
Oh, no. She shyly comes to the microphone. First of all, thank you. Thank you very much for thinking about us. And also, Chief is a volunteer at Fernd Care Free Clinic, so how's that? Yeah, so we're pretty proud. The money, of course, will go directly to Patients Services. At next meeting, I have the yearly report for the 2011 report, so we can tell you all about the services, what we've done, what we've done over the year, how many patients we've served, and things like that, and I'll be back at call to audience, because I have another thing to do. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Look forward to it. Thank you. Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. And our final presentation this evening is our Downtown Development Authority, and I see Christina and Chris are both here, and they have an unusual-looking thing with them. What is that about?
It's very coveted.
I know.
Extremely coveted. I should put it up here so people can see it, though, right?
Come on, you guys.
Come on up, come on up. Okay, so.
Come on up.
Wow, man.
Come on.
Tough group here.
You weren't shy when you were pimping those cookies.
So for the last four years, the Ferndale DDA has been hosting its Warm Hearted Cookie Challenge with its Holiday Ice Festival. And over those years, we've raised thousands of dollars for local charities, and have had many charities benefit from the program, and a whole lot of fun. Everyone bakes their own cookies and comes to a local establishment in downtown Ferndale and basically tries to sell their wares, sell their cookies to as many people with as many dollars possible. So, this past year, we had seven charities involved. We had the Seniors, we also had the David Smith Fund, the Community Foundation, Peace Action, Good Neighbors Garden, Ferndale Historical Society, and Paws for Life. Between those seven charities, they raised on their own on that day over $1,000, $1,006.31, to be exact, right? Count every little penny. In addition to this, we have the, really the privilege and the honor that Sharon Chess from Chess Grouping, who coordinates this program for us, also donates an additional $200 to the winner. So we are here today to announce the winner. And I wonder who, right? But before we do that, and before we give them the award, right, I also wanted to mention is that we, also through the Holiday Ice Festival, we were able to raise $2,800 for the Make-A-Wish program. So we had a great year of helping charities this holiday season. When times are tough, we get tougher, right? So I think that everyone's done a really good job. So with that, I do want to bestow a check, as well as the coveted title of Warm Hearted Cookie Challenge winner, to the Seniors and Jeannie Davis, thank you for your time and your crew, who loved it.
Wow. (applause) I mean, who wouldn't buy cookies from this group of folks? Right. Homemade, were they homemade cookies? I do believe they were, right? Wow. Well, our seniors, you look great, Jeannie. Your group looks great. Yeah, no, thank you for all your hard work, yes. How did you do it?
I just want to thank the DDA for doing this. They put on a wonderful affair every year, and it's lots of fun, and how did we do it? Who better but little old ladies and little old guys to make great cookies? Who's not going to buy cookies from us? Come on, look at us. And I've got a great crew, great crew. But we believe in paying it forward, so what we did was we have a check for the $200, and we want to present it to Chief Sullivan for the Fire Department's Smoke Detector Program.
Oh.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Thank you very much. We'll use this dearly. The Fire Marshal already has plans, he's working on specialized smoke detectors for the deaf and hearing impaired people and blind, so that they can warn people, either by sound for the blind, or by a vibrating device and flashing lights for the deaf. So this will go well toward the program.
What a wonderful program and a wonderful gesture of our seniors. Thank you so very much, all of you. Take the trophy now. Wow, I tell you, the generosity of this community.
I just want to say we didn't cheat this year either.
This year. That's not what the other group said, but thank you. Seriously, the generosity of this community just never ceases to amaze me, and to get money and pay it forward like that, what a great gesture, and thanks, everybody, for your hard work. The clerk was polite enough to tell me privately, but I'll admit it publicly, that we didn't approve the agenda technically before the presentation, so actually, at this point in the agenda, a motion to approve the agenda would actually be in order.
So is.
Moved by Lennon.
Second.
Supported by Martin. Are there any changes to the agenda beyond the presentations that we've already had? If not, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. Now the agenda is approved. Our next order of business is the call to audience, as you know, call to audience is 30 minutes now, more time needed at the end of the agenda. You get three minutes to talk about anything that's not on the agenda, you'll get an opportunity at that point in the agenda to talk about that, but three minutes is yours to talk about anything you would like, and Greg, I'm thinking you might want to talk about Taste of Ferndale this evening.
I sure do. I want to make sure that the camera gets a chance to adjust and center it on there for the wizard working in the back room there. My name is Greg Pollock, and I am the newly-elected Chair of the Ferndale Community Foundation, and I want to invite all of you to the Taste of Ferndale, this is our fourth Taste of Ferndale event, and this year we're holding it at Boogie Fever, it's a new venue for us, we've kind of outgrown Viennove, and Viennove closed.
Oh, yeah, that.
But we did require more room, so we're hoping a lot of you will come out, we're going to have over 16 businesses participating. I don't want to say restaurants, because we have businesses like Treat Dreams, obviously Anita's Kitchen, Chisano Coffee, some of our favorites are back, but we have some new ones, Dino's Lounge is joining us for the first year, as well as Grab and Go Sushi, and it's not all just raw sushi. We'll also have our Silent Auction, and a new thing called The Giving Tree, where we'll have items that are wrapped, and you pay $20, and the value of the item is guaranteed to be $20 or more, so it's something kind of new, and hope that you can all make it. Tickets are $32, and I have tickets with me tonight, and Councilwoman Melanie Piana and Councilwoman Dan Martin also have tickets available. And any questions?
Just look forward to another great event. Thank you, and congratulations.
It's going to be wonderful. It's, this, it is this, next Tuesday, February 21st, at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg, appreciate it. Dennis, good evening, sir.
My name is Dennis Hefner, 76th Street, Florida. Our motto, our motto at the Center for Ferndale Senior Citizens Group is come play with us. And on that note, I would like to invite you to come and play bingo with us at the Community Center. We have raised the payouts for each game from $1 to $5 for regular games, and from $2 to $7 for special games, and $15 for trouble off. This all starts on March 5th, and we play every Monday from 1:00 to 3:00. Unlike the government, we have raised our prices to toss the plate, $1.25 for each additional card. You only stipulation, you must be 18 years of age or older. So come play with us and have fun, every Monday.
Thanks, Greg. Sounds fun, thank you. Welcome back.
Hi. Up here in my role right now is the Secretary for Citizens for a Fair Ferndale, and I just want to remind everyone that we're now accepting nominations for the 2012 Good Neighbors = Strong Community Awards. I want to invite everyone to join CFF in celebrating one of Ferndale's richest resources, the people who live, work, and attend school in Ferndale, who are willing to step forward and actively strive in their everyday lives to make our community a place to celebrate diversity. The Good Neighbor Awards identifies and honors individuals, organizations, and businesses in our community who are outstanding examples of good neighbors, folks who are committed to building, preserving, and improving the quality of life in their neighborhoods and in our community. We really believe that good neighbors do equal a strong community. You can go to our website, fairferndale.org, where you can submit a nomination online, it's a really easy process, you can see a list of past winners, you can download a mail-in nomination form if you'd like, or you can just find out more about us. So please help us honor individuals, groups, and businesses who make Ferndale a community that values the fair and equal treatment of everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Danger.
Hi, guys.
Good evening.
Hello, Mayor and Council, it's been four years since I've been down here, and I didn't bring any props with me, I'm not good at this yet, so next time I promise I will. I have a few dates for the community to remember. The first is Thursday, March 15th, and I think I've already emailed all of you about this, but the Ferndale Education Foundation's annual dinner and raffle are coming up, again, that's Thursday, March 15th, at Boogie Fever. The Ferndale Education Foundation raises money for educational enrichment programs in the Ferndale Public Schools, it's an organization that I've sat on the board of for four years, we have a great, a great team of people from across the district, it's a big fun event at Boogie Fever every year. The next is on May the 3rd, so a little bit further out, but we're going to keep saying it over and over so that we get great attendance, is the Fernd Care Free Clinic Annual Dinner. So that's coming up again on May the 3rd, the Fernd Care Free Clinic Annual Dinner. Fernd Care Free Clinic, I know you guys all know, but for anyone who doesn't, provides free medical care to uninsured people ages 19 to 64 in Ferndale and our surrounding communities. We serve over 200 patients, I know Ann's going to give all this info at the next council meeting, but we've been open over a year now, and we have over 200 active patients, which is a huge achievement for us, I think so. May the 3rd for the Fernd Care Dinner, and then, the big important one, February 28th, we have an election coming up on February the 28th, I know the city clerk is well aware of this, and there is a school, well, a school bond extension that's going to be on that ballot. So even if you wouldn't normally maybe turn out for a Republican primary or a Democratic primary, please pay attention to the fact that there is a local school election on that ballot, there is information, as Jessica Stolger said earlier at the school's website, but also there's a group that's supporting this, they were here in council chambers for a forum, I believe, this weekend, I wasn't here.
Yesterday.
And it's certainly, I think, as a resident, a part of my civic duty to support the school district that supported me for 18 years, so I will absolutely be voting yes on that, encourage others to do so too. Vote February 28th, thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Welcome back.
Yes, thank you. Ann Heller, speaking now as President of Fernd Care, once again, 1024 Leroy, we have an event, and our event is tomorrow, that we're going to talk about the reason for the pink and the red tomorrow, is Valentine's Day, which nobody's mentioned yet. Now, and Fernd Care, we have an event over right across the street, in fact kitty-corner from us, at Salon Rehe, or Ray, I always never know if I should pronounce both their names, or just the one name, but I want to give credit to both. We're going to do an art gallery experience, something a little different for us, it's a little different also because we're going to be on the east side of Woodward, so many of our events take place on the west side of Woodward, we're coming over to the east side because our residence is on the east side, and so we're coming over there, we're doing an art gallery experience, isn't this, something just a little different, it's going to be curated by Alvita Ozano, $5 at the door, come on in, we're going to start at 6:00, before you go out to dinner, before you do whatever wonderful thing you're going to do tomorrow for Valentine's Day, come by and say hello, and see all of the creative things that we're doing in a hair salon that automatically, surprisingly, wonderfully turns into an art gallery. So we're going to be there, it's going to all benefit Fernd Care, all of the proceeds benefit the clinic. Once again, we're going to be at Salon Rehe tomorrow, from 6:00 to about 8:30-ish, 9:00-ish, $5 at the door, so I hope to see you there.
Great. Thanks, Ann, appreciate it. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Amy Butters, and I'm also here to talk about the school bond. I am a parent of three kids here in the Ferndale schools, they're all in elementary school right now, and as Kate has already talked about, the voters in the school district, which includes both Ferndale, Pleasant Ridge, and a little bit of Oak Park, and a little bit of Royal Oak Township, those voters are going to be going to the polls February 28th, that's two weeks from tomorrow, so we're hitting the home stretch on our bond campaign. And this bond, as Kate mentioned, is going to be an extension of a bond that's already in effect, and it would provide $22 million toward improvements in district buildings. I want to thank everybody on the council, you are all on our list of endorsers, which is, there is a list that we have on our website, which is citizensforqualityschools.org, and we really appreciate the support of Mayor Coulter and all the council members for, you know, backing us up on this effort to get this bond passed. With me tonight is a student from Ferndale High School, and I'm going to let him talk in a little bit, his name is Ryan Coprins, and he's going to talk a little bit about one of the specific items that are going to hopefully be funded by this bond, and that is the auditorium at the high school, Ferndale High School. I know that Violet Toomey was here at one of your previous meetings, she's a fifth grader, I think.
A great girl.
And she did, she talked a little bit about the arts programs and the auditorium, the importance of having a good auditorium in our district, and I wanted to sort of expand on that a little bit. Our community is a huge supporter of the arts, I think everybody in this room knows that, and so I don't, I don't think it really takes much convincing to explain the importance of a good, updated auditorium in our high school. And Ryan is a perfect example of how the arts programs in our schools help the few And Ryan is a perfect example of how the arts programs in our schools help the future of our kids. And he's going to tell you a little bit more about his experience and the fact that he's going to be carrying his education on toward his, his, furthering his education in college. The auditorium is used for many special events beyond just the arts programs. This isn't just for the kids who do plays and musicals and concerts. This is for the kids who use the auditorium. For example, the convocation at the end of the school year is something where all of the kids use the auditorium. And this bond money is going to go toward making the stage barrier-free, which means that kids who use a wheelchair will be able to fully participate in events like that. I'm just going to skip ahead a little bit. Also, besides the high school.
You're getting close to three minutes.
Okay. Yep, couple more sentences. Also, besides the high school staff and students, the auditorium is also used by the younger students. I talked about how my kids are in elementary school. They have been to that, that auditorium as, during the school day many times. So the auditorium is something that the whole district uses, both as audience members and also performing up there on the stage and the band and orchestra and other events. So I'd just really like to encourage everyone to vote yes for the school bond, February 28th. And turn it over to Ryan.
Thanks, Amy. Good evening, Ryan.
Hi, I'm Ryan Coprance. I'm currently a senior at Ferndale. I'm, I was involved in the marching band for four years, and I've been involved in the theater for six years. And I've been on the lighting crew for all six years. And I want to go into college for all that and lighting design and everything. But the, the dimmer system, it's, it's completely out of date. Things are just breaking on it, and we can't replace anything because it's so out of date. No one makes any more parts. The board is from '96, and it's, it, it doesn't really fit with how we want to design the shows. And then the instruments are also very out of date. We only have really four instruments that people still use today. And then the AC, the, the, the air conditioning is a luxury for people so that they're not sweating and trying to breathe during convocation and all those other things. But it, it also keeps the equipment cool so that it functions better. And also, the hot, dry air from the auditorium, it also rips the fabric and makes, makes the fabric on the house curtains brittle, and it just tears all the curtains. And we've tried to sew them up so many times, and they're just patch repaired. And like she was saying, everybody in the community uses the auditorium. I, I help with the JFK talent show, and it's, it's just all those little kids showing off what they can do. And I feel like if, if we had better equipment, I would be able to give those kids more and be able to do more with the lighting and just give back to the community anymore, make it better. So thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Appreciate it. Well said. Good evening.
Good evening. Happy Valentine's Eve on behalf of the FBSC. At our last meeting, we were just talking about ideas for a green tip to present at the city council meeting, and we were talking about the impending holiday. And we actually just started thinking about, there's a lot of things about Valentine's Day that you can do for eco-friendly ideas that you might not really think about. So we decided to make that our green tip for today. So just a few ideas to make your Valentine's eco-friendly. You could try to find cards that are made from recycled or tree-free paper. Or better yet, try to make your own card out of something that you already have around the house, because it's the sentiment inside that you write that is actually more important anyway than how much you paid for the card. Or you can consider sending an e-card. I know it's kind of impersonal, but nowadays, everyone's going digital. And again, it's the sentiment of what you write, not necessarily what you pay for it. You can try to find organic chocolates or fair trade. Choose organic or locally grown flowers or live plants to give as gifts. If you want to give jewelry, you can consider buying like pre-owned or older jewelry. You can also try to find restaurants that have organic food or local restaurants to make sure you can walk to dinner, even though it's kind of chilly, but you can snuggle afterwards, so it's okay. Or better yet, if you don't want to have to walk in the cold, you can stay at home, make yourself an organic dinner, some organic wine, get yourself some soy candles. Oh, and another idea that was pretty cool, you can actually, if on a recipe, you can actually make your own perfume. All you need is distilled water, vodka, and essential oils. I know you can get essential oils at health food stores. We have a couple of them here. So then you have the vodka to drink afterward. So that's pretty romantic. So yeah. And yeah, we're seeing all these, and then we realized you can actually get all these things right here in Ferndale. So it's, not only are you helping the environment, but you're also helping local businesses. Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you. Very creative. Very creative. Thank you. Very nice. Anyone else that would like to address council this evening under call to audience? Well, thanks, everybody. My close call to audience, and we'll move to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are normally considered routine by council and enacted in one motion unless something is removed. So let me read the consent agenda items for this evening. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held January 23rd, 2012, and the special meeting held February 6th, 2012, as submitted by our clerk. Approval to amend council rules of procedure, as submitted by the mayor. Approval to adopt the amended resolution granting an exemption of new personal property to Valentine Distilling Company for a period not to exceed six years, and to authorize the city clerk to sign and submit the application to the State Tax Commission. D, approval to renew a pawnbroker's license to be located at 771 East Eight Mile Road to be held by Mark Aubrey doing business as Motor City Pawnbreakers III, and to approve two surty bonds, each in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. E, approval to schedule a public hearing to be held on March 12th, 2012, to amend the DDA's tax increment financing and downtown development plan for the existing TIP area originally created by city council in 1981, as submitted by our DDA executive director. F, approval of a contract with Rich and Associates for the cost not to exceed forty-nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars for technical support for the purpose of multi-space meters, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement and to charge the auto parking fund. G, approval of voluntary separation contract with a city employee, as submitted by our city manager. H, approval to observe Memorial Day on Monday, May 28th, 2012, with the annual Memorial Day Parade, as organized by our Ferndale Memorial Association, and authorization for the mayor to sign the agreement with the, with the association. I, approval to accept the program invoices to send FM Batten and Lieutenant Kazey to Eastern Michigan University's CERNs, is that, I don't know how you get, fire staff and command school at three thousand dollars per student for a total of six thousand dollars. And that comes from our training and education account. That was submitted by the fire chief. J, approval to accept the J&amp;J Fleet and Fire Truck Service shelving estimate for five shelves, all aluminum, and hardware necessary to install such, five thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twelve cents from operating supplies, and that was submitted by our fire chief. K, approval to purchase nine Scott Aviation Carbon Fiber SCBA tanks at seven hundred and twenty dollars per unit from Argus Hasco, for a total of sixty-four hundred and eighty dollars from the capital improvement fund, also submitted by the fire chief. And finally, approval of the bills and payrolls as certified by the city manager to be paid, subject to the review of our council finance committee. Chief, you've been real busy this week. Is there a motion? Well, first of all, does anyone want to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull B, item B.
Item B, pulled from the consent agenda. We'll move that to the regular agenda. Anything else to pull from the agenda? Katie.
Not so much that it needs to be pulled, but what are Scott Activation Carbon Filters scaba tanks?
Good question. Hang on. Let us make a motion, and then we'll discuss the consent agenda items. Good question. All right, so one item has been pulled, item B. Any others? Then a motion to accept the consent agenda would be in order.
I move to accept the consent agenda with item B removed.
Second.
Moved by Piana and seconded by Martin. All right, now discussion and questions, and the question has been raised by Katie. Chief, I'm hoping you have an answer for that.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Fibon carbon SCBA or Scott, they're self-contained breathing apparatus, or the tanks we wear on the back for firefighters. And we do have some lightweight ones, but not enough for pulling someone out of a fire, and then they switch out their tank and go back in. They're a lot lighter, and they're stronger than the aluminum tanks we currently use. So that fatigues the personnel less, and with less personnel, we like to fatigue them less. So this would put our whole front line covered with everyone having a carbon fiber tank on their back.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the explanation. Katie, good. Thank you. Any other comments or questions about the consent agenda? Then, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Colter.
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. We're moving on now to the regular agenda. Item A, the appointment of Kate Baker to the Planning Commission for a term ending December 31st, 2014. Is there a motion?
I, where's that? Lost you, Kate. I move to appoint Kate Baker to the Planning Commission for a term ending December 31st, 2014.
Support.
Moved by Lennon and supported by Piana. Are there any comments or questions about that item?
Does she have the qualifications?
I don't know. Kate, you want to answer that question? Do you have the qualifications for this job?
I hope so. I've, I've been the council representative to the Planning Commission for four years and would love to continue my, my, my term there. We have had a resignation from the commission, unfortunately. One of our members has moved out of town, so he had to leave. But I would just, I would particularly love to serve with, with Councilwoman Piana on the Planning Commission. I think that we would have a great time together. I also wanted to join the Beautification Commission, but then remembered I can't officially be on another city board or commission if I'm on the Plan Commission. So I will just need to volunteer for Peggy Snow until 2014. Sorry, Peggy, if you're at home listening, because I kept promising to be on the Beautification Commission, but I promised to be an active volunteer for the Beautification Commission. Any questions?
I have a statement, not a question. I just want to, you, the seat's not even cold yet, so I would just want to thank you for your willingness to continue to serve and, and the talents you bring to the table for the Planning Commission.
It's my pleasure. I'm a zoning dork. I want to keep doing this nerdy stuff. I love it.
Well, I'm very thankful that you want to continue your term, because Kate was instrumental with the, the Board of Commissioners who served a couple of years ago, who kind of redid our zoning ordinance and, you know, set the vision with the master plan. And so looking forward to, looking to your creativity to continue looking at new policies.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Any other questions or comments about this item? Otherwise, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Colter.
Yes, thank you. That, that appointment is adopted. Regular agenda, item B, which is former consent agenda, item B. Dan, I know you pulled this, and this is my item, actually, so I'm, I'm happy to describe this, and I was going to talk to it anyway. But it's just, you know, I've been on council for a year now, and I'm getting used to the procedures and rules around here. And one thing that always struck me as odd is if, if, as Katie wanted to, for instance, speak to something on the consent agenda, members of the audience have to come up, pull it, literally put it at the back of the agenda, and then wait until the end of the meeting to get their questions resolved. And that always struck me as rather odd. And so what I've, I'm requesting council to do is simply allow members of the audience to speak to consent agenda items during the consent agenda, instead of having you remove it from our agenda and add it to the regular agenda. This simp, this, this simply allows you the opportunity to speak to it at the consent agenda, so you don't have to wait till the end of the meeting. It does nothing to limit residents' ability to, to speak to items on the consent agenda. You have the exact same ability as you always had, three minutes to speak to these items. It simply moves it up quicker in the agenda, so you don't have to wait till the end of the meeting to do it. So I hope, I hope it's a simple thing, but it just always struck me as a sort of a quirk of our rules and procedures, and I wanted to clean that up. Any questions or comments about that item?
That's exactly why I wanted it pulled, because it is a change to our process, which is not necessarily routine. So I wanted to make sure residents understood and were comfortable with what we're trying to do.
Anyone from the, the audience who would like to comment on that? This would be the appropriate time now.
Good idea.
Thank you, Kate. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
We don't actually have a motion.
Oh, thank you very much. We need a motion. That's correct.
I move to adopt the amended rules of procedure, revision number five, so that Section Two, Order of Business Consent Agenda reads in part. Do I need to read all that?
No.
Okay.
Very good.
Thanks.
Moved by Piana. Your support.
Support.
I mean, Mike, I think beat Dan to it, so we'll give the support to Mr. Lennon. Moved by Piana, seconded by Lennon. Any further discussion? Now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Lennon.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Mayor Colter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Our next item of business is called the council, and I'm going to allow our state representative, who I saw just enter our chambers just a short while ago, move to the front of that, because I assume you want to come and say hello to us. State Representative Ellen Cogan Lipton, our friend.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of council. I wanted to come tonight just to give you a brief update on the executive budget recommendation, which the governor just delivered this past Thursday to the Committee on Appropriations. I serve on that committee. Most importantly, the subcommittee that is most relevant to the cities I represent, as well as the school districts, is the General Government Committee. And that is charged with, of course, revenue sharing dollars. That's the portion of the budget that deals with constitutional and statutory revenue sharing. We are now kicking off the budget for, for this year. It began, of course, with the January Revenue Estimating Conference, which showed that we had a modest surplus based on the May Revenue Estimating Conference numbers. We now have the governor's executive budget recommendation, which he delivered to the legislature. There's been some, some various comments on it. And starting tomorrow, our committees, the appropriations committees, will be meeting to actually debate and, and then comment on the budget in the form of budget bills, which the governor has indicated that he wishes to have finalized by May 1st of this year. I just wanted to give some highlights of the budget and then, and then answer any questions that, that, that you may have. I'm going to focus on, I'm going to give just a brief overview of the highlights, but I'm going to focus specifically on revenue sharing, as well as the school aid budget, which I think are most important to cities, as well as school districts. The governor has indicated that he will be looking at forty-five million dollars in the area of public safety for cities that he's designated as cities of greatest need. Looking at top four cities to be targeted, Detroit, Pontiac, Saginaw, and.
Flint.
Flint, yes. Thank you. Fourteen million in law enforcement, fourteen and a half million for criminal justice, twenty million dollar appropriation, or potential appropriation for jobs for, for children, for, for teens. And in, of that five million dedicated to high-risk youth employment opportunities. Education. The highlight of the education budget is some additional dollars for, the bulk of the additional revenue is going to go to early education, zero-to-four initiatives, primarily Head Start, Early Start. There's been some talk that the actual, that this budget represents an increase in school aid, and that's actually not entirely true. If you look at the entire appropriation of school aid, which is based on not only the school aid formula, as well as other categoricals, this budget represents a approximately two percent decrease of the overall education funding from last year. And if these numbers are carried forward out to 2014, because of pressures on the school aid fund due to the elimination of the Michigan Business Tax, we'll see approximately in 2014, somewhere around three to four percent decrease in the overall funding for our K-12 schools. Okay? So that's really important. So that's really important. There are certain one-time appropriations that are recommended in this budget that will be an increase over last year, but that is not the overall picture of the budget, of the school aid budget. The EVIP-type program that cities, villages, and townships had to deal with last budget, that will be carried forward this year to school districts. So they will enjoy, if you will, that hoop that will be set forth, that if you must do certain things in order to get this incentive pot of money. Okay? And that seems to be the name of the game in terms of budgeting for this administration, making drastic cuts and then setting aside sort of small pots of money that various entities can compete for based on a certain set of criteria. In terms of cities, villages, and townships, in terms of revenue sharing, constitutional revenue sharing, 2% in constitutional revenue for an overall 9.4% increase in statutory and constitutional revenue sharing, $11 million set aside for counties with best practices, and the EVIP pot of money will be designated at $20 million. Let's see, $130 million dedicated to the Budget Stabilization Fund, which is commonly known as the rainy day fund. A lot of people are questioning that because various economists have indicated that we're not really out of the clear yet, and $130 million would probably fund the government for about 30 minutes. Not really, slightly longer perhaps, perhaps three days. Infrastructure, a lot of talk about that. The proposal is to increase gas and various fees to draw down, or to use about $120 million General Fund, General Purpose dollars to draw down, I think, a three or four-to-one match in federal transportation dollars. That's a very controversial series of bills have been, have been put forth, about 16 bills, and we'll see what kind of, what kind of hearing they get in the legislature. It's, already people are starting to debate that issue, and so no one's really, no one's really expecting that we'll be able to draw down the full federal match dollars, but, let's see, very little on corrections in terms of no substantial decrease in the corrections budget or increase. The corrections budget is about 25% of our General Fund, General Purpose, so certainly needs to be looked at, but this particular budget is fairly silent on that. Let me see, I just want to make sure that I hit all of the high points. Let's see, educate, let's see, higher ed, there'll be roughly 3% increase for community colleges and universities as long as they meet certain new criteria in terms of the number of undergraduate completions. And finally, from the rainy, or from the surplus, a $50 million investment from the General Fund, General Purpose surplus for ongoing funding for technology upgrades and automation opportunities in terms of the Office of Management and Budget. So that's sort of the highlight, there's plenty more. This is the executive budget document here, and I can answer any specific questions or as questions develop later on, as we're going through the budget process, I'd be happy to answer them. And so with that, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming. Are there questions of council or staff while we have our state rep here?
I have one. I've heard that personal property tax is kind of being backed off just a little bit, and they're looking at more of a phased approach. Is that what you've been hearing as well? And do you have any updates at all on that?
Yeah, that is correct. The governor made no mention in his budget address, which is typically the time that the executive recommendation would talk about large sweeping changes. The executive budget recommendation does not contemplate the elimination of the personal property tax. That's something that various interest groups are still pushing, namely the Chamber and the Michigan Manufacturers Association. They contend that that was the quid pro quo for their support of the eradication of the MDT was basically dependent upon the elimination of the personal property tax. The push to move forward with that has really slowed down mainly because of the disproportionate impact it would have on certain counties. The Speaker of the House, his county, Calhoun County, would lose something like $28 to $30 million, which probably doesn't give him an enormous appetite in the House at least to push it. So it's looking like that, along with the bridge, is probably pushed to the back burner. That doesn't mean that things have a funny way of sort of verbaling up, but I would say as time moves on, closer and closer to the election, it's very unlikely that that will be taken up. And certainly, this budget does not contemplate any of those numbers.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Well, thanks as always for coming by. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Chief Collins, anything for the good of the order tonight?
Thank you, I have nothing for the good of the order, but I would like to put out that one of our retired officers has suffered a very serious illness, Scott Consel, who retired from the department several years ago. I wouldn't like, I haven't talked to Scott, so I don't know how much information you'd like to put out, but any thoughts and prayers for Scott? He's pretty well-known around the community. It's, his illness is fairly serious, but curable at this point, but anybody that knows him, know that we'd like to tell him that we're all thinking about him.
Thank you, appreciate it. Chief Sullivan, anything else this evening?
Mr. Mayor, council, we have 45, excuse me, 46 members in our CERT team now, and we're starting the training on Saturday. Before each training meeting, we're going to have a half hour where we take information and bring any new interested people up to par, and we're taking anyone regardless of their handicap or not, because we have all kinds of jobs they can do if we should have a disaster or a emergency management issue.
Excellent.
Ferndalecert.org, or Ferndalecert@FerndaleFireRescue.org is where you contact. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Derek Delacorte, anything from Community Economic Development this evening?
Nothing.
Christina, anything you want to, you're not a department head, but anything else from DDA? Good, good to see you. Cheryl Lynn, anything from the city clerk's office?
You want to do Jill from my creation first?
Did I? I saw you earlier, and for some reason, Jill, I thought maybe you had left, but here you are, I'm sorry. Jill, Recreation Department.
Yes. I just wanted to thank all of the participants that came out to our Sweetheart Date Night this past Friday at the Kulik Center. We had just over 40 little girls, ages ranging from three all the way up to 15, bring out their dads, uncles, grandfathers, to enjoy an evening of music and treats. I'd like to give a special thanks to Larry and Monica Mills, who came out and took pictures of all of our wonderful couples.
Larry had a camera with him?
Yes, believe it or not.
Really?
I'd also like to thank Chris and Krista Johnston from the Emory. They once again offered a predance dinner special to all of our couples. So it was a wonderful evening, and we had a lot of fun, so we look forward to it next year.
Great, thanks, Jill, appreciate it. Cheryl Lynn?
Speaking of there being an election in two weeks, I would like to invite anyone who's interested to the Public Accuracy Test, which will be held here in City Hall in the lower level on Tuesday, the 21st, at 6:00 PM. That's a great way for you to understand how our voting system works here in Michigan. And also, we have a vacancy on the Police and Fire Board. We have received one application, but I wanted to put it out there that that is an opening that's available for people with any kind of background in police, fire, human resources. Check it out on the website.
Thank you. Our city manager, April, anything else for us this evening?
Sure, just I want to again thank everybody for coming out for goal-setting last week, and we will have a follow-up session at the regular meeting on February 27th to approve formally the goals and talk a little bit more about them and get them in a consistent manner.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Dan, Chris, anything from the attorney's perspective tonight?
Very briefly, fairly comprehensive revisions to both the soliciting and canvassing ordinances as well as the vending, both mobile vending and sidewalk vending have been circulated to department heads, also to the ordinance committee. It's my understanding that hopefully there'll be feedback with respect to those drafts, and you may be seeing that perhaps at the next council meeting.
Good, thanks, thanks for your help with that. Councilman Martin?
Just a few things, like everybody else has said, taste of Ferndale, contrary to what Melanie will say, I have tickets too, to sell. I want to thank Chief Collins and the police. I had the opportunity to do a ride-along this past week, and it was a really rewarding and educational experience. I rode with Sergeant Brown, who did an excellent job. He was a stellar host, and I cannot say enough about the coordination and teamwork that your team has out in the field. You kind of know it's there, but to be able to see it as it's going on is incredibly impressive, and we're very well-served by your department, so thank you. It was a very good experience for me. I also want to report on an update relating to the parking issue. There's been a lot of discussion about what a parking solution looks like for Ferndale, particularly in the DDA district. That is a long, multifaceted solution, but we are making progress potentially addressing some of the issues on the residential area that borders the DDA district. A group of folks, including representatives from the DDA and the city and the police department, are working very closely together in forming a pilot program, which we'll be bringing to council to present, and including that we will have a community meeting to get feedback and to discuss what the goals of the program are and receive input. But for those residents who I know are frustrated with the parking situation in the neighborhoods around the downtown, I want to assure them, but progress is being made, we are moving forward, and I think good things will come from this, so.
Councilman, thank you. Councilman Lennon?
Nothing really, other than my hats off to the residents and the business owners. As I traveled around the streets last few days, I saw clear walks. So I think that's, you know, awful some kudos to Derek and his staff and Tim for enforcing the policies in the previous winter, so it's starting to pay off, because we did have issues in the past, but it's working now, so. Good job, residents, good job, business owners. And no more snow, so we don't have to worry about it.
Here, here. Councilwoman Piana?
Yes, and I would like for us to go back and excuse Councilman Scott Galloway for his absence. And so, do we need to do a...
State a motion and second to excuse him?
I move to excuse Councilman Scott Galloway?
Second.
From tonight's meeting.
All right. That's sufficient, correct?
That is, yes.
He's skiing in Colorado, as I understand.
We've got to do a vote of some sort, we can do all...
Pardon me?
I said you need a vote of some sort, whether it's all in favor or roll call.
Oh, you can do a unanimous, all right.
Certainly you can.
Yeah.
You want it to be unanimous?
Yes.
Unanimous, good, so.
All right.
That agreed?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then I just wanted to personally thank you, Mayor Scott Galloway, and the city manager, April, for working with the city of Pleasant Ridge, community leaders, to come to a conclusion on our fire agreement. So thank you for all the hard work that you did on both communities' behalf. And of course, I have some updates about transportation. You all may have seen in the news that the Woodward Alternative Analysis, the $2 million that we got, has now expanded. It was originally between Ferndale and Birmingham, or 8 Mile and up to 15 Mile, and now it's the full length of Woodward from the riverfront all the way down to Pontiac. So this was just announced last week, and the cities, the new cities along the Woodward have been invited, and we're going to be convening soon to discuss what this means for the actual study. So I think this is a great opportunity for us to continue to work not only with the cities, but also between counties and with the city of Detroit on our shared interests of improving regional transit. On top of that, our region doesn't really know what bus rapid transit is, or it's also the governor's office has been calling it rolling rapid transit, and the Federal Transportation Administration is having a, is hosting a transportation day on February 24th, and I can't remember what day that is.
It's Friday.
It's a Friday at the Detroit Zoo from 8:00 to 12:00, and the cost is free, and anybody who's interested in learning about bus rapid transit can attend, and you can go to SoutheastMichiganSummit.org to register. Seating is limited, so get your, reserve your space now. So, and unbeknownst to me, I also scheduled my annual ride-along the same weekend as Councilman Martin, and I was, rode along this year with, I'm going to butcher her last name, but Officer Amanda Samansky, and had a very low-key evening, but a great opportunity and discussion to learn more about what the police do. And I think it's really important for council members to understand what goes behind the scenes to help us make better decisions, so I had a great time, learned a lot. And that's it.
Great. As for me, speaking of bus rapid transit, last week I attended the South Oakland Mayors Association Meeting, which was really both entertaining but very informative. John Hurtel, who is the executive director of SMART, was there, and he talked about the series of bills that has been introduced in the legislature to make a regional authority possible so that we can move this BRT, Bus Rapid Transit, process forward. I admit, you know, I'm one of those people that was very excited about light rail and, you know, I don't want to say disappointed, but, you know, a little disappointed in this notion, but John did a great, great job of not only presenting the benefits of it, which are that it's an eighth of the price and you get about 10 times the coverage in a BRT system, but it's, it carries as many people as a light rail system would at the same speeds as a light rail system. So there's a lot for us to all learn about, BRT, a new acronym first of all for us to learn, but also to learn about this new system. And I think the more people see it, the more that we'll warm up to it, I know I have. Secondly, I just want to say tomorrow is Valentine's Day, so if you can't be with the one you love, love the one you're with. And if you can't be with them, at least love yourself, that's what I have to say. So have a happy Valentine's Day, everybody, and meeting is adjourned.